Okay, well, welcome. And I don't know if you have any commentary that you'd like to share as we discuss this, but I would certainly welcome the opportunity, or I would welcome you. You're welcome to offer any insights that you think we may need to hear in discussing this. Okay, and so Wayne, the Planning Commission did approve this, right?
We did.
Okay.
So you'll still have the 3.58?
Correct.
All right, any thoughts, comments?
Well, I'll confess, I knocked on all the doors around that property and tried to, I like to get a flavor for what the feeling is in the neighborhood and they're supporting. So this is good.
Good, I've talked to a few neighbors as well.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so you have their support, which is good. Oh.
That's understandable.
Yeah, but it'll be cleaner for fire, too.
We just tell them buy the lot or welcome your neighbor.
The other thing that I looked at, which I was really grateful for, was the Jones and DeMille analysis. So engineering says it's good to go, so anyway, it looked very complete.
Okay, anything else? Then I think that we'll move on. Okay, the proposed, the next item-
Do you need to close the public hearing? Since it is a public hearing.
Oh, okay, so-
That's the public hearing part of it?
Okay.
Well, you need to open it for public comment.
Okay, and I didn't appreciate that, thank you.
If anyone wants to give it.
Okay, thank you, and my apologies to any of those remote that wanted to comment. Anybody here in the room that has any further comment or input? Okay, anybody online, Jody? All right, so we will close that portion of the meeting and move on to the work session. We did discuss the request, and so the next item is the proposed ordinance amending City Code 10-6, the Appeal Authority. So in talking to Craig and Ethan, it became apparent that we need to hold a public hearing on those and then also a Planning Commission hearing on that proposed change, so-
For the Appeal Authority?
Yeah, for the change to the Appeal Authority, so that will be something, the Planning Commission, it's February 16th, right? And then the- the City Council, public hearing on that will be on February 22nd. Okay, any comments or-
I just, I think it's a great idea, especially, you know, you're darned if you're here, you're darned if you don't. I mean, we canceled the Fugue hearing because members recused themselves at the request of the Fuges.
Right.
And then they used that as fodder this morning for the judicial hearing, and I'm like, oh, so anyway.
Yeah, and in-
I think the sooner we clean this up and make it a little more clear, it'll actually help everyone.
I agree.
So I love that.
And Craig was saying that, you know, he's going to recommend three or, you know, at least a few different attorneys that will serve in that capacity, so it won't just even be a single person. And Vaughn Pecel, actually, in speaking with Craig, he may be able to even lend a hand in that role. The one thing that we do need to also be mindful of is the fees that we charge, and we talked to Craig and Ethan about that. I mean, they should, they should line up with the size of the appeal being heard, because if it's going to require a significant amount of time, it shouldn't fall on the city to put the bill for that, so.
The other question I have is, okay, so if we have multiple attorneys, I would presume that they wouldn't necessarily swap cases. Like, once one person got a case, would you kind of follow that through to completion?
Yeah, yeah, it would just be more like in mediations, oftentimes, you know, you'll get like a group from which you can pull a mediator, and so, I mean, we could have some sort of an assignment system, or, you know, it could just, well, actually, that's the way it works with judges, too, you know, it, that should not be too hard to make the selection process, whether it's random or alphabetical or whatever that happens to be, but no, you're right, once, once it's before a particular Appeal Authority attorney, it would stay with that attorney before, or until a decision's made.
Okay, and is there anything there that'll help kind of define the scope of a certain case that could come before them, so it doesn't turn into a, you know, big, huge amount of information that they're going to have to wade through to drastically increase the costs of the city for this attorney?
Right, well, so one thing that David Church did mention when I was on the Board of Adjustment and we were doing our training, is he said that the chairman of that body can establish his own procedural rules, so, and, and, you know, we did make an effort to do that, but I think that someone that's in this business would be able to lay that out more clearly and just basically say, okay, look, here, this is what, you know, you're restricted to, and if you want to go beyond that, you know, then these are the implications, but it should be pretty easy to have them, and then we can, we can even unify in that respect the procedural rules. I'm not really certain on what that would require of us, if, I would imagine that, or I wouldn't be surprised if those procedural rules can be made by the Appeal Authority. I mean, I don't know if our code speaks to it, or if it's something that we have to get in the middle of, but, I mean, we can revisit that when those procedural rules are, in fact, established.
I think, and I can't, can't remember if in the ordinance that you had written, if there were any, any guidance at all around that kind of thing, but I don't think our current code speaks to any procedural rules at all.
Yeah, no, it was, it was just basically on the chair, yeah, and so, and I think it's good to give, you know, the Appeal Authority, you know, they're, they're the boots on the ground, they're the ones that can decide, and, and, you know, I don't mind as long as, even if they just provide them and, and, you know, their, just their own preferences. I don't have a problem with that, as long as, you know, they don't seem to undermine the interests of justice, but I don't see a problem with them, especially if they had experience in settling these sorts of matters.
Yeah.
I like that we're like taking it up a notch, making it more professional, and I think that, you know, like you said, it protects the city and the citizens both, so I like that, like that a lot.
Well, and I like the consistency, too. If it goes forward with the same person every time, we're not rehashing it. I think that's one of the frustrations that maybe have been in the court system, is a different judge every time, and you're just reiterating the same thing over again. It's like you're starting from ground zero every time, and this way we'll be able to establish histories with, you know, of consistency for, and which will be beneficial for both the city and the resident.
Yeah.
The residents won't have to just rehash everything every time either.
And on appeal, this is, you know, an area where it, you want to have a clear record, good, sound legal reasoning for the decision that the Appeal Authority makes, and that can be difficult with, you know, people that aren't legally trained to provide that kind of an opinion, and I don't fault them for that, but this will also allow for that. So even as a matter of appeal, you'll have a very clear record as to how the Appeal Authority got to the decision that he or she did, and, and if the judge to whom that appeal is made feels that it was an error, then, you know, they can make that call, but at least it will be based on a fairly complete legal analysis and record, as opposed to just dumping, you know, well, here's the meeting, figure it out, which is kind of where we're at now.
Yeah.
Enjoy our minutes.
Right. All right, anything else on that one? Okay, the ADU application, everyone have their copy of that?
I looked through it.
Is this a, maybe, is this a copy from another city? It's kind of, we've just kind of-
Similar.
Wayne?
Copy from Salem City.
Okay.
I had a question. If they're submitting a site plan and not needing an inspection, like if they have plans that they're submitting, I don't know, I just wondered if, maybe if they don't need an inspection, if there could be a little bit of a discount, or, just because I feel like, or is it just all going to be uniform? Just seems like the inspection process is probably where our cost is coming in, right? To have somebody go and do the inspection, it was just a question, because they had the option of either having, like proving, or does everybody have to have an inspection regardless? I guess that's my question.
If they want to have an ADU, they have to have an inspection.
Okay.
Not everybody in town will have to have that, only those that want to-
Well, right.
Make money.
I know that, but I, I thought, read that they had a couple of options.
Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, just verify.
Wayne, I'm just curious, in putting this together, did you happen to talk to someone from Salem City? I mean, if there's any issues that they wish they'd addressed at the outset that aren't really addressed in this. I'm not saying that there would or should be any, but I'm just curious if-
I didn't have any dialogue with them, just went online and downloaded their application and their ordinance, and looked at that and tailored ours to theirs, except for the, the application is pretty much word for word, as they had done. I think the city, to waive any kind of inspection, the city would be taking on some unnecessary liability and making some assumptions, and this is a one-time inspection, it's not a yearly inspection, or every time a new renter comes in, it's just, it's a one-time inspection, just like a home inspection would be for a new home, so.
The only time you'd have to update the inspection is if they did a remodel, and that would be going back to regular building.
Correct, yes.
An inspection. So on, where it says the proof of compliance with building and constructional codes, then the inspection will come from the building inspector as well as fire, make sure those two things are in place?
It looks like, it looks like a lot of the cities are just using building inspection to do it, because it, it's fallen under that IVC IRC for smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors.
What we have to look at, what's in HB 82, because there's a specific list of things in there, egress and, and parking, and it's all in there. So those aren't listed separately for the, for the citizen, are they, anywhere?
No, we should come up, we should probably come up with a list of the things that we'll inspect, just so they know what we're-
Yeah, so they're prepared to-
Some of that would be under site plan, right? The site plan would be the, all of those things that you're talking about, parking is under, is included under that.
Well, we're supposed to have sewer on it, and a lot of other things, but I don't-
Well, you want to go in, you, I mean, you want to go in anyways, because if somebody's trying to rent out a room in a basement, and all they have is sheets hanging on the tuba floors.
Yeah.
You never know, you know, it's not quite livable.
Sorry.
And that was my thought, was under site plan, you know, layout of existing and proposed building and parking areas, including floor plans as applicable, I'm wondering if we could put in, just underneath that, a secondary set of checkboxes that just delineates all the different things that they have to have, just to kind of make it that much easier, and that hopefully will also mitigate the number of questions Jody gets when somebody shows up and says, is this good enough? And she then asks those questions, if we could preempt it, I think that'll help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be perfect.
Yeah.
I think if we give them a list, I'll bet you most of them, you won't even have to go back, because they'll know what's-
It'd be nice not to have to have two visits, for sure.
Yeah, if they know what's supposed to be there, they can get it all put together first.
This just continues my-
A penny for your thoughts, Doral.
No, I've given them too many times, and, and I'm, as you all know, I'm, I'm just really not in favor of this, and in fact, I woke up in the middle of the night panicked, because if we do this, and you're doing it, put it that way, you could lose housing, you could take some rentals away from citizens that we already have doing it. If you think about it, if they fail an inspection, I don't know what you're saying, but I think you've got to kick them out, and, and I, first of all, I wouldn't do that, but, so I'm concerned with the very basics of how you're going to run this, because it's not going to be easy. First of all, what is my incentive if I'm a renter? First of all, how do you find out? You know, a good law-abiding citizen is going to do it, you know, but, but I don't know how you're going to find out. I have people living with me and they're paying me, and if you do find out, it's nosy to some, and, and much so, you know, to, to some who have, have that inclusion, but-
We already have that problem. I mean, somebody could have an in-home business without telling us, and then they wouldn't be getting a business license. I mean, those problems are, I mean, that's, that's life.
You have a situation now, though, where they exist, and I don't know how you know that, but they exist in areas of the city today, and what's our intention with this document to do with them?
Well, either we'll let them know, and either they choose-
How are you going to let them know?
Well, we're putting it on the website, we're putting it in the newsletter, we're letting people know about it, and if they choose to say, yes, oh, I am renting, I'll come into the city and I'll, I'll abide, because I want to make it a business, and if they don't, they don't.
So the incentive you're offering me is 300 bucks, it goes on my Utah County, it's recorded at the county, it means my taxes will go up.
I don't know if it necessarily makes your taxes go.
Yeah, it will, if you, if you, if you have a home that you, you rent a room out in it, you will see a tax-
But it comes down to the same thing here, is if you go to the county and you tell them that you finished your unfinished basement, you know, it's the same thing, you know, I have a choice whether I will or not, you know, and talking to Corbett, I realized and learned the other day that if you don't, and you just finish it, and then your insurance, you have a problem, and your insurance finds out it's unrecorded on the county, they won't cover it.
They won't insure it.
So there's your incentive-
Yeah.
-to make sure, because if, if your renters in the basement burn your house down, good luck getting your insurance to step in.
Get your insurance paid.
So we're wanting to make sure that they are nice and covered, so that's one of the bigger things.
So y'all have a plan getting everybody caught up?
Well, we have a plan to make sure that it's on the, the law and the ordinance and making it legal for them, and then they can take that accountability and risk-
Most of our ordinances are set forth in people, they're on their honor, right?
Mostly.
Good citizens, mostly, to follow those codes and ordinances.
Well, and you think that most, most people would want to be able to rent, if they're renting at, as a business, they would want their, their renters to feel secure, that that is a safe place, and that our law enforcement and our fire department knows that they're, they are there, so that if there was an incident, that they wouldn't be left behind. I think that would be an important aspect.
All, all of the things that you're bringing up are definite issues, you're not wrong.
Yeah.
But it's not unique to this particular law at all.
I, I wish I knew from Salem, how many citizens use it, or, or even going down the road with our city, how many will use it?
The only alternative, seriously, is that we just don't pass anything.
Which is, which is the way it was, which you know, which is what you know I like.
But again, the state kind of-
I liked it because-
Pulled the carpet out from underneath us.
It, it, this is not a problem to be fixed, in my opinion, it's a problem that we're creating, because now you need to worry about enforcement, and if you do an inspection and they fail it, you're obligated as a city to kick them out, if they aren't willing to fix it.
They have a-
They'll fix it.
So, so I think, actually-
Just like you're building, you have a fix-it, if you go in and you're building your house and it's through the doorway, and the building inspector says, hmm, that's not quite right, fix it, we'll come back, okay, it's just one of those things that you do when you're in that mindset.
Right now, though, so anybody who currently has rental is breaking our current ordinances, and we're now making them hack, they can keep the status quo.
Do you, do you, do you know how many there are?
I have a, I have a number of, I have an idea.
Okay, so are you going to be watching those people to see if they fill this out?
I don't have time.
No.
Okay, okay, then-
We just give them the opportunity.
We're now getting the ability to abide the law, whereas currently they don't-
But the majority of people are going to want to-
Well, this was a, this one's a new one, this is a new one that you're putting on top of, of an existing non-problem.
Well, except for the fact that it was illegal before, I mean, so I think that the, the switch that was really flipped is that we made it legal and then imposed some additional restrictions. I, I got to say, I'm not sure, I mean, I've said this in other contexts, I don't like the idea of a police state, but there's nothing wrong with us enforcing our laws either. I mean, it's, it's something that is okay, if, if we have established a law that, you know, and, and if, if residents want to say, well, it should be tweaked in the following ways, I mean, that's the democratic process, but, you know, as far as, you know, we've made an effort to comply with what the state requires, and, and I think also met some minimum threshold of safety obligations on the part of the rental property, and, and so even in terms of going forward and enforcing, I mean, I, I, again, I don't want to just-
Go house to house.
Yeah, yeah, sic the hounds on them, but I, I don't think there's any problem with us enforcing our laws either, and migrating toward that, and that can be more of an organic process, really. I mean, we can start off with those properties that, you know, will, based on the honor system, come forth and, and check all the boxes and pay the necessary fees, and, and then, you know, as far as moving forward, I, I think that, you know, we can approach it on a case-by-case basis, that's not us peeking in windows, but is us enforcing laws that are on the books, that we frankly, in my opinion, have an obligation to enforce.
And parking isn't a big deal, too.
It's, it's still tricky in my mind, and I'm only representing citizens that have contacted me about this whole thing.
Sure.
They, they don't think you have a right to know if they're getting paid or not. Even if families living there and they're paying rent, that's a rental.
Family's an exception.
But it's still a rental.
But that's even carved out in our ordinance, right?
The state statute, the state statute is that it indicates that it's a non-family, it's a, it's an owner, owner occupied, non-family rental.
Okay, so, so now you're digging even more into the home and who's there, if they're family, which is a broad, a broad term. In, on, in our ordinance, a family is a paragraph of definition, and it's a good one, and it's accurate for these times, but I'm telling you, there are people in the city that have people living with them, and you've got to find out if they're, if you want to do this, you've got to find out if they're paying rent, you've got to find out if, if it's, if it's built-
The rent for us is not, you don't have to find out if they're paying rent, all we're finding out is if they have the business license.
Well, you do, because if someone's just living there and they're not paying any rent, you can't do this.
It's not our business.
Right.
But it's the same with other ordinances, that if citizens are breaking other ordinances, unless someone complains or we happen to notice it, how do we know? We don't. We're not going to go knock on every door and make sure that every household is in compliance with every ordinance in the city. I don't have time for that.
I know, but you find out, it's easy to find out, just in your-
Well, they'll either come into compliance or they won't. They'll either stay safe or they won't.
I said enough, but I think if you do this right, you'll have less rentals in the city, because they don't pass inspection, potentially. So someone could be living there, and you talk about housing is short and limited, and there may be people living in places that are not up to code. I just, I just know it exists.
That's a good thing?
No, but it happens, and so, and so the point is-
Why would we, as a city, want to be okay with that?
Do you want to live in a little bit of a problem or out on the streets? So, you're, I'm looking at this-
But our, 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 what we have said that we will do as elected officials is the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and so I think that it's important that we recognize that and not just say, well, of course, anybody can live wherever and not consider the safety. I mean, we spend a lot of our budget on fire and training and everything else, because we want our city to be safe. So why would we turn our eye and say, well, we only want this part to be safe, but not you, you, and you, you know, and it does come back to the insurance part as well, because if you're not recorded that you have a finished basement or that you have an apartment down there, something does come up, you would be on the, on the hook for not just the replacement of your home, but also for any loss of life or anything else that happened with that family that you have now shoved in the basement without any safety protocols. So it is, it is a little bit more than you just have a bed to sleep on, it's that you have a bed to sleep on and you're safe.
And I can appreciate what you're saying, oh, yeah.
I think just, just keep in mind that most of the stuff on the list is going to be safety items, like you talked about. I mean, you look at that family that lost their life back east, they had no carbon monoxide tester in the home, everybody died. Simple, they should have known, if it would have been, if it would have been inspected as a rental, they would have been forced to put them in, and different outcome. Same with egress, you put a ladder on the window well to get the kid out of the basement. So, I mean, it's, if you sell it as a safety, I think that'll help a ton.
And really, that is what it is, bottom line.
Yeah, I mean, the safety- The safety for everybody, the city and the people staying there.
Well, I just want, I just want to follow up on this ordinance and see what happens over the next year.
Yeah.
If it, it may not even be used once.
I think that's a fair point.
Just be prepared for that.
Yeah.
They say that statewide, it's about 5%. Once this law's been passed in other cities-
Is that a worthwhile law?
It's about 5%, well-
So 95% are breaking the law?
No, 95% choose not to have an ADU.
I choose not to have an ADU.
No, I know that, but-
5% actually choose to register and have an ADU. That's the stats, and so that's the now.
The stat you're interested in is, how many have an ADU?
Because we already do, because we already do.
No, we know that, no, nobody's ignorant on that one.
And, and there are angry citizens already.
I've had quite a few that have called me since we've asked this, and I said, thank you.
That have bit my ear for two years.
I feel like I can finally do this, I can, I can remodel and I can, or I can change some things around, and, you know, my husband died last year, and I want to, I wanted to rent out the basement, but I never felt like I could before.
One final comment, Carrie, I was very disappointed in that representative. I knew more about that bill than he did, because he was reading it for the first time here.
Well, remember, he, he wasn't a representative when it passed, so-
Yeah, I think that he was going a year back.
He was, May 2021 is when it passed. He was on the, he was on the vote, he said he voted for it. Now, now, I was very disappointed, and if I can't get a representative or senator or somebody here that tells me why, and I get at least one of my 12 questions answered, I'd have felt better about it. That was brutally painful for me to watch, and I love the guy, I think the guy's a great on all the other matters that he's worried about, but on this one, that I, that I really wanted my questions answered, zero answers.
And to be fair, I had asked, I hadn't asked him to come prepared for that, I asked, I had asked Senator Mckell, and then he got stuck at the Capitol in a meeting, and so he gave his apologies for not being able to come, but that was his, that's the assignment I gave to him, and he was not able to join us.
It taught me something that I didn't want to learn, that I think your people are voting for that stuff and not even reading it. That terrifies me.
All right, well, and I appreciate, yeah, your point is taken, Doral, I appreciate that, and I think that your suggestion to revisit it and, you know, do some analysis in a year's time, give it a, a trial period, that's a, that's a valid exercise, I think, or, you know, maybe there are elements to the safety checklist that need to be pared back or something, but, but the fact remains, in, in my view, that we needed to- Paired back or something, but but the fact remains, in in my view, that we needed to make them legal. And and I think it's reasonable for us to have some minimum safety thresholds. And and the enforcement, it's a tricky issue. It's a tricky issue, no matter what law we're enforcing. But, uh, you know, I I think that, you know, we we can move on from this point and and always keep it an issue that we can revisit.
So so we're on this, we're voting on this tonight. Can we vote on it without that addendum of of what that safety checklist will be specifically? Can we at least vote on this this, um, as it's presented to us, knowing? And with a motion that we will add the addendum of its specifics of what will be looked at?
Well, that's a great question.
Should we have it wait till next time?
I my preference would be to have the final. I I I don't like voting on incomplete information, so. If if there's a downside that you can see to that, I would appreciate.
Well, I would defer to to, you know, Craig and Corbett and Jody, cause they're the ones that administer this. You were talking about the idea of this is kind of the skeleton of what we've been saying, but we talked about having an appendix with all the specifics on the checklist. So do, how long would that take to put something together? And is it something that is already in our code someplace where? We're not really adding anything. We're just attaching it.
It's it's all in the code now, so I mean, we could. Yeah, I mean, I'll put a list together and work with Corbett and Jody and Wayne.
Yeah, so that it would be consistent with existing ordinances.
Yeah, it's it is. It's all existing ordinances, just the exits and.
So we're just making the checklist to make it easier for the.
Yeah, and they'll just drop from that existing information.
The parking portion, the extra space that's required, that's. That's not even in our ordinance. I mean, but it will be with this. So. But that's just to keep the people off the street.
Okay, well.
Is there anybody looking to get this application in tomorrow?
Not that we know of.
Okay.
So.
They don't know it exists yet.
To not wait until it's.
Except it's going in the newsletter.
Put it in the newsletter next week to say, be looking for this and in two weeks, we'll have the application ready for your, for you to check and see if you're interested in in doing this.
And the application will be, I mean, that's separate than the ordinance itself anyway. I mean, we could really proceed with the ordinance and then the application could be something separate.
Passed the ordinance last time.
Yeah. Okay, so then fees, um, application fee, three hundred dollars, uh, that would just.
Just standard.
Yeah. What is the exp- expense, uh, inspection cost? Do we know?
Wanna make sure.
People are now summarizing the due inspection at a hundred dollars.
Okay.
But there's also the voting.
Okay.
And we we got the three hundred based on what same charges.
Yeah, and then the administrative, right, like on our office part.
The city wouldn't be subsidizing that, anything.
Okay, perfect.
I like that incomplete applications will not be accepted.
Okay, so and and does that give us the information that we need for the the fee structure then, so? All right, um, any other thoughts on that, on the fees? Okay, so.
As it covers, now I can think that's again another thing after people start using it and we verify that that fee covers. It will be part of our fee schedule going forward, which we vote on every year. If it needs to be changed, we can.
We just don't want to change.
Yeah, so we're not.
Subsidizing it.
Right, never want to subsidize.
Okay. All right, um, next item is upcoming public hearings. Uh, we already discussed about the planning commission. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, appeal authority, um, amendment. So then it will also be, uh, addressing city code ten eleven eight B one E regarding fencing. The new code would read, quote, "That fences or hedges taller than forty-two inches shall not be less than thirty feet from a property line abutting a street and can run along the side or rear property lines as long as the fence does not extend beyond the front plane of the residence."
And we didn't have that in our packet today, did we? I didn't read that.
What was it before? Was it fifty? What was the feet before? What are we changing it from?
Talking about the fence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not in our packet.
There is.
Yeah, I didn't study, get to study that one. That's what I wondered is what.
This is just the fence down in four seasons.
No, it's it's any fence.
Okay.
Looking to. The problem right now is a setback is five feet.
Ten feet in there that is no man's land. And that grows weeds, greater fire hazard.
And the thought was, why even have a fence setback on the side and back of of a property? Um, if I put a fence setback on my property five feet, then that re- and my neighbor doesn't. Generally, it's gonna give them five more feet of property to play on. So we thought to put it on the property line, and we could see no reason not to do that. As long as it did not come forward of the front plane of the house. The concern was to make that a kind of an open space area, wildlife corridor. Uh, to not have fences completely surrounding property right up against the property line, but to have a setback.
Away from the front.
Give it that. The city has tried to preserve to a degree possible over the years. So. The basic reason came down is why not do that? We couldn't come up with any reasons why not to do that. And we felt that it would be, uh, advantageous to go ahead and do that, particularly with the fire hazard, clearing the weeds and that sort of thing. Around the property that otherwise would be difficult to get to with the fence setback.
So this is what's on your public hearing that's coming up on.
That's correct.
So the fence line wouldn't go, uh, would could be on the sides and the back, but not the front.
Okay.
It was on the line across the house. The fence could not come forward of that to the property line.
Is this just in areas where fencing?
Where fences are, yes.
Fences are allowed, not where they are, but where they're allowed.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, what's the what's that distinction, um, you're making?
Well, some people have fences that don't meet our current code.
Okay.
So. Yeah, we gotta enforce it, right? Or not, no?
Some want to.
Good idea, too.
Fencing has been an issue from the very beginning.
Okay, so and and this is really just more of a preview. I mean, the public hearing is is forthcoming and likewise with the city. Council, uh, will be addressing that issue on the twenty-second. Um, and then another, uh, issue that will be raised on the twenty-second in, uh, in our meeting would be to, uh. Changes to city code ten four five D site plan. Uh, the current city code reads, D, each final site plan submitted shall contain the following information unless specifically waived by the planning commission in whole or in part. And then the proposed new code would read, each final site plan submitted shall contain the following information unless specifically waived by the building inspector and other assigned review official. So Wayne, uh, can you offer some insight into?
Hey, Wayne?
That?
I'm just wondering about that word inspector. Should it be building official? I mean, we need to be consistent, so.
What I I guess what I'm asking is what do we want? And let's make sure that we have it worded exactly what we want.
We're wording it identical to. Two parts of our code. And we're wording it, we're correcting it to what one part of our code says. So it's identical to that part of that code. So there's not a discrepancy in names or titles. It's matching up with part of our code that is correct.
So that's the crux behind the change then is to just consistency?
Cause the challenge I have with building inspector is that means Sunrise Engineering?
No, Corbett has a title of building inspector.
He does. But.
They don't review site plans. So that's a distinguishing.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've offered. Uh, we haven't taken them up on that. I'm just saying, that's, I, again, if if. Sorry, but this is the way I think. If I'm writing software, I gotta be super careful about the variables that I use. And to me, this term is a variable, and I wanna make sure that we're using the right variable. So, um, is it, do we want it? And regardless of, maybe we need to go change the other place in the code. But who do we really want? Regardless of how it's worded today, who do we really want to be doing that? And then let's fix it to be that in both places if we need to.
You thought we were doing that.
So we want the building inspector to be able to do that. Okay. Oh, they've offered both. Yeah, and again, um, I'm trying to think of, um, the other engineering firm that offered. Uh, Jeremy's Building Firm or Engineering Firm offered to do site plans as well. So if we ever, a- again, it, we can't become so dependent on Sunrise or this company or that company when to us, those should just be vendors that we contract with from time to time.
Yeah.
Right? So our code needs to read in such a way that whether it's Sunrise or whether it's some other engineering firm or whatever. It it works. That's that's the only point that I'm trying to make.
Okay.
Is it prepared to use both names and or? City inspector and or individual?
A- again, I I think the way it reads is is just fine, but I've learned that when we get into judicial hearings, that these terms actually come up. And we need to make sure that we're doing it right. That's the point. So let's make sure that we've got the exact right term in this spot. So if we feel like we do, great. If we don't, I don't wanna come back six months later and say, dang, we should have used a different term.
Well. During our codification process, we determined one of those. Sections was correct. So that's when we, and that's what we're trying to match up with the section that's not with that that was adopted at the time of codification. So I guess we can go through a number of reiterations of that. Next year, maybe something else will come up, but that's what we're trying to go back to is what. What we ended up in the codification process to match that.
Yeah, I I hear I hear what you're saying there. I, the one warning I would give is just remember. Because of the the codification problems that we had. A lot of what we did with codification was just try to get it back to the original ordinances. So that we we could say, and in fact, be honest about saying that we did the very best to represent our current ordinances. So that was the codification. But now we're past that. So now we can write new ordinances, and we should, that represent our best thinking right now, not back in codification time.
Well, inconsistency too.
So if if we need to adjust the wording with a new ordinance, we're perfectly at liberty to do so. We don't need to be held to any standard based on the codification.
Right, I guess. The the words we picked at codification were not the original words for that ordinance. We just, we determined that that was the best wording and we changed it, but one part did not get changed. So.
Okay.
A little bit more on the background.
Again, if if building inspector is fine, then then I'm I'm okay with it. I just, like I said, wanna make sure that we. Have analyzed that thoroughly.
All right, thanks, David. Thanks, Wayne.
Two, two, they'll they'll be having two public hearings for those two two ordinances, and then we will have the same two on February twenty-second.
Uh, yes. Well, so three, three ordinances.
What's the, what's?
So there's the fences, there's the appeal authority, and then there's the the amendment that was just being discussed.
Forgot the appeal authority.
Yeah. Okay. Um, item six, update on development contract with Summit Creek.
So I'll start, but Ben, if I lie. You're welcome to catch me and Wayne too, cause they both had conversations. So we had a really, really, uh, productive meeting, even though. Poor Steve, he was recovering from COVID and was still a bit hackish. Um, but we had a really productive meeting. I think we came down to the the. Four items that are kind of what I would call the the major sticking points. Um, m- most of those, well, of those four, I think most of them can be solved. They were more, there were question marks needed to be filled, uh, figured out. Um, one is, um, Summit Creek would like an easement. Um, granted by the city up to their three hundred acres that they own above essentially the water tank. Um, and so the question came down, well, okay, what kind of easement would you like? So they need to answer that. We're waiting for them to answer that. The other issue, um, was regarding the, um. The roads that are kind of at the end of Eagle Nest. And I'm gonna leave it that way because there are mul- there are two roads. One now terminates in a cul-de-sac, the other one, uh, goes over into Summit Creek, but it's unpaved. It, however, both of them have been, um, given to the city as part of the previous construction. But they're kind of not really good for anything, um, specifically the one that isn't done. And so Summit Creek would like the city to, um, uh, give that back to them. They then want to redraw some of their development in that area, and they wanna make use of the the one that's a cul-de-sac today. And turn that into a throughs- through street, but a private through street. That would then come back into the Summit Creek development. So, um, Wayne brought up, um, that. There's a process we have to follow if we're going to convey la- uh, property over to a a private organization. Uh, and so we just need to follow that. So Summit Creek has essentially asked us to, until we have gone through that process, they kind of wanna push pause on the development agreement. Until they know for sure that we're able to give them that.
Oh, now I feel like I'm an October fish.
So.
I have a question because I live at the top of Broad Hollow. Is there going to be another access point for that three hundred acres or just Broad Hollow? Is there gonna be, will there be another road?
So so before I answer that question, let's back up a little bit.
And, cause you said something about deep forest.
Because, no, that would be the only access because that's the only access the city owns.
Okay.
But the real question, and this is why I asked, what type of easement are you wanting? Is it a pedestrian easement? Okay, I I I have no grief over people walking up a road to get to a mountain. I mean, we do that all the time and it's okay. Um, but if it's like a, um, you know, a semi-truck easement, I might be a little more concerned. Um, so anyway, it depends on what kind of an easement they're asking for. So that's why we asked them to come back with, what are you really wanting to do with that three hundred acres? What are you wanting there? And so they're they're still coming back with that.
Just wondering, uh, cause my neighbors have all asked me.
And I don't blame them for asking, and that's part of the reason why we're, why we have to find out from Summit Creek, what? What kind of an easement do you want? And then we can come back and we can say, well, we're okay with that or no, we're not okay with that.
Just especially with, um, up there where you look at where that new house is being built and then we have, you know, the gate and the water, there's power boxes. There's just not a lot.
There's not a lot of room.
There's not a lot of room right there, so I'm just really curious how that would work.
And we made sure that they knew that you cannot build a city compliant road there. There's just not enough space. We don't have enough road there.
Okay.
So they know that, but again, that's why we have to let them come back and say, what is the easement? So was that an accurate portrayal?
Yeah, I don't know if I. I agree.
Okay, okay, which parts weren't?
No, you're fine.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I only saw there were two.
Yeah, well, those, those were the two big rocks. What were the other two, Wayne? Oh, the open space.
Yeah, the, open space and trails.
So there's two parts of the open space. One is, as part of the Mountain Bill overlay zone, there's a certain density requirement. And so Summit Creek, when they did their, their current plat that they're working off of, met that density requirement. But, anyway, there was a mistake made, doesn't matter who or how, where some of that open space was then sold to a homeowner, which of course defeats the purpose of the density requirement, as well as a few other things. So what we're asking as part of the development agreement is that the open space somehow be protected. That it is open space, it's on the plats as open space, it can't be changed without prior approval by the city council. So, and I emphasize prior, because we did in fact approve that change, but it was after the fact, and honestly, I felt like we kind of had no choice, because it had already been done. So it was kind of like, well, what are you gonna do? Unwind that purchase agreement, or whatever? So anyway. So, the, the idea is that it would require prior approval. The second issue having to do with open space has to do with the trails, which currently are not accessible by the citizens of Woodland Hills, when that was part of the agreement that we made all the way back with Don Meacham, was that those trails would be accessible by citizens. Summit Creek has a legitimate concern that if you just open it up to everybody, then you've got kids with bikes, motorbikes, whatever, and now they're having to pay to maintain trails that are getting ripped up. And so, some kind of protections need to be in place, but we still feel like we should, you know, that we want the original agreement honored. So, anyway, those are some of the big concerns.
And I would chime in that sometimes it feels like us and them, and I would like, you know, that we could have some crossover, we could have some trails that connect. I'd like it to be more one big city.
Yeah.
It feels like a lot of separation sometimes, so it would be nice if there was a way we could do that respectfully, and be able to use the trails, and, you know, have them carry over.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that's exactly what we tried to convey, was, okay, they've got some very good points, you know?
Yeah.
You have to protect, I mean, you don't want kids going in there and destroying property. But at the same time, we want, we want access that was part of the original agreement. So, anyway, that's another one that, I think that one was on you guys to go back and try and, okay?
I just think too, like if there's access, we'd have more interaction, and more, I, I just think it would be good for unity. Just my opinion.
So anyway, and then the other one has to do with the ordinances not applying once the development agreement's signed. So any ordinances that we pass, except for the ones that are mandated by the state or federal government, and I just felt that was too broad. So, in their mind, they've been told that that's kind of boilerplate language. And so, I'm, it's on me to talk with Craig and find out if that is indeed boilerplate, or if maybe we could.
So saying that any ordinances that are passed by the city going forward after this is signed would not be effective to the citizens who live in the Summit Creek development, unless there's statute?
No, not the citizens. Okay, that's where you gotta be careful. It's not the citizens, it's really about the development. So like, if we said that now we need 50-foot wide roads, I don't know how wide our roads are right now, but anyway.
Supposed to be 50.
Okay, if we said we needed 51-foot wide roads, as, and we passed that ordinance, then that would not be applicable to the Summit Creek development, because the development agreement was signed. And to be fair to them, again, you know, it's important that we realize that, one of the things they're looking for is they're looking for, some kind of stable ground under which to do this development. And, and again, I understand that, and, and I think that that is important, that we give them that. But, again, if we find out that roads can no longer be built with asphalt, and we have to use something else, then the city, the city can't be handcuffed to say, you know, we can't pass an ordinance. So the question is really, what kind of ordinances can we pass that would be okay? So anyway, that's, that's a, a little bit of a sticky situation there.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah?
And I had one comment, David.
Please.
In conjunction with the vacating of our portions of a couple of public roads, Summit Creek is willing to pay for some of the development that did not happen, that was supposed to happen, as a trade-off for giving them these, some of this city property in the form of roads. So, since both these areas are part of the, of the agreement, Summit Creek has asked to put the development agreement in pause for a bit, until we can determine whether this is something that the city wants to do. And, taking the pulse from a public hearing, and back to the city council, they feel that it's a significant part of, of the agreement. If the city decides it's not in the city's best interest to do that, then that will change other parts of the development agreement, as Summit Creek has talked about paying for some of these, for some of the other development that the city may be required to do. So, that's, that development just happened today, and I've communicated that to, to our attorneys, and to David and, and yourself, but not to the rest of the council. So, until we, and Summit Creek has done a lot of analysis on that, and they're willing to share that with the city, as far as estimated costs to do one versus the other. And the city will need to take a look at that, and do some of its own analysis to determine if it is a, a proper trade-off, so to speak, with making adjustments in those two portions of the agreement. So, anyway, that's, that's kind of where we're at now. That development agreement is on, on pause for those major issues. We can still go forward with, with some of the other things that are being worked on, but not to the completion of the agreement, until these other matters are, are further addressed, and, and there is a, a decision by the city council, that it is in the best interest of the city to make that trade, that exchange, so that Summit Creek feels comfortable with that, and then go forward with the rest of the agreement, based upon that having been approved.
So just to be clear, the, the city already has an obligation to develop certain aspects of those roads. So we would be, in exchange for turning over that property, be basically saving ourselves the cost of having to do those improvements that we would otherwise be obliged to do, right?
Correct.
That's kind of it in summary?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I think, if there's any part of this that I think the city can help, it would be to expedite this review. Not shortchange it, but just be on top of, and move this review forward as quickly as we possibly can. Because again, you know, we're either on hook, on the hook to do that development, including completing one road, and putting things down on that cul-de-sac, so that the platted lots can be sold, and whatever.
And who are on the hook too? I'm just curious.
Summit Creek owns most of those lots anyway.
We're obliged to do it for the benefit of Summit Creek already, then?
Yes. Yes. So basically, what we'd be doing is exchanging. Now, there are two lots that are not owned by Summit Creek. And I think it would also behoove us to contact whoever owns those lots, and just make sure that they're okay with the plan moving forward. Or that they have an opportunity to give input, just part of the public input. But, anyway, honestly, the one road is kind of a no-brainer. I think, I think that's no big deal. The, the one that is a little, and I say little, bit more difficult, is the cul-de-sac road, but honestly, it's not that big of a deal. As we looked at it, we looked at it on the map, they do want to put a gate across that road, but that's after all the current homes that are there. So, anyway, really, it's just talking to those two lot owners, and then asking them, okay, do you want to be behind a gate or not? If not, then Summit Creek has a different place to put the gate. It's, anyway, so it's not that big of a.
And that's all part of approaching those owners? Are you suggesting that someone?
Sorry, just so you know, we've tried to reach out, so we're making a tip.
Yeah.
All right.
So are they working on the plan? An engineering specs and drops?
Well, so they, they have a preliminary plan already.
Okay.
And they've shared that with us. And, so, I mean, you can see kind of the rough idea of what they're planning. They won't have a final, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. They need the development agreement before they're willing to spend the money to do all the engineering and everything for the other plan. But they don't want to, anyway. So we, it wouldn't be fair to us, for us to ask them for that level of detail, until we have a.
Oh, even just like a Google Earth, Scratch, Sharpie?
For sure, yeah.
Oh, they've got that.
Perfect. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry, that took longer than I thought.
Wow, that was very helpful. All right, city council reports. Council member Hilliard.
Okay, so 911 Special Service District, that meeting's coming up, so nothing to report there. Beyond there still, I believe, still looking for their, a new kind of department head there, but we're working on that one. So, number two, though, the South Valley Solid Waste District, this one is actually, I need your guys' insight, or any of your concerns potentially. We've got a vote tomorrow to approve, because they're going over the final budget numbers, to approve the new transfer station, which will be in Spanish Fork. Right now, it's currently looking around 30 to 32 million dollars. And that transfer station will be able to drastically increase their capacity. They're going from two compactors to three, and then a fourth, I believe, is dedicated solely for recycle, which will also eliminate a lot of their bottlenecks. They'll be a lot safer, it's gonna be a fabulous facility. And so they're just looking. If the numbers all come back, that bill for them will not increase our dump rate at all. If it goes over that, then we might have to, then I think, I think the board won't actually approve it with some serious, a lot more work. But they believe they can get in that in. So, I was able to speak with Bob this week to get his feedback, since he was the one prior there. And so, he's, he and I are on the same page to vote affirmative on that. Unless anybody here has anything that they know of, or concerns around that vote, that would like me to ponder voting a negative.
I think as long as financially, it's not impacting the residents, I think it's good.
It's been absolutely fabulous for me. I've actually really loved, Bob said he got stuck with solid waste, because nobody else wanted it, and I'm loving it. It's a lot of fun. The perks are great, too, and the smell is just the best. But, really, what has been amazing is working with Terry. So the head of the transfer station is, he's brilliant. He is a finance genius. They're netting this year over 400 grand, and they've, most of, not most, but a lot of this money is coming from savings, that they've been able to, to build up towards this. They're building out there with the Sunrock Development, out by the 911, and the, the animal shelter. So it's just right over there. And they've found some funky land that's really unbuildable without something like this going in. So they're building in huge piers that get down to the bedrock, and they've found quicksand out there. So there's all sorts of cool stuff. And that's all been already found, and so they've engineered for it, and so those numbers are there. They're buying up a lot of the resources and materials now, before price fluctuations. They're partnering with Sunrock, because Sunrock's putting in their own facility there too. And so they're gonna be helping subsidize a lot of those things, because they're already there on site, and working to build it as well. It's very, very impressive how thorough they have been, going through numbers, going through the bidding process. It's, it's, it's been really a lot of fun.
Quicksand is an interesting solution to garbage problems.
Yeah.
Well, we, we take most of the garbage to the, to the landfill. But that's another really cool thing, is the landfill just was able to do a deal that has guaranteed the life of the landfill is now 50 years out, on the short end, on the north end of 100 years out. And that will be able to also increase the expectancy of them buying garbage from all the way up into Utah County, even up into Davis County. And so thus, every single ton that comes in is, is more money going into the landfill.
So will our, I mean, our prices, I mean, our residents were worried about our prices. So will it continue to be the same?
At the 32 million and below, yes. If it goes, if, if the bids come back over that 32 number, which they're not seeing it has done, and I haven't had my agenda yet from, from there, but it should be good. So they're not expecting it to go north of 32. But as long as it doesn't, Terry's not raising rates. Especially with all of the new things they've been able to get at the landfill, and the efficiencies they've gained there, they're passing those, those savings on to the residents. So, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. All right, council member Kinnaston.
All right. Craig and I took county up to the brush piles again, recently, and we are now working around their training schedule to get the burn down up there. So it's still on our to-do, and it should be within the next few weeks.
Great.
So, still gonna do it, just trying to schedule.
We need to give the residents a warning.
We.
Yeah, we're going to.
We will.
I think we will. We'll get a few calls if we don't.
Can we pass out like marshmallows and hot dogs and things?
Might be like a big party.
Bring a long stick.
Is there anything else, Craig, you want to say on, okay?
Gotta get it done while there's still snow on the ground. Sheesh, it's supposed to be like 50 at the end of the week.
There's a lot of snow up top. He's ordered more snow, so.
We're just waiting on county. Want to get that burn done. Working on some things that I talked to the mayor about.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, great, thank you. Council member Lunt.
Um, so, South Utah Valley Animal Shelter. They don't have a meeting until March 15th, but I did speak with the director, and talked to her about some of the issues. We're doing a vaccine clinic here on May 14th. We'll advertise and get ready for that. It's a ways out, but it'll be much warmer then. It'll be nice. So.
What day, May 14th?
May 14th. I guess we just clean out the bays, they kind of bring everything else, we do the advertising, and we have to have someone, she said Carrie's done it in the past, done the paperwork for the licensing?
No!
So we have to have somebody do that.
Carrie, no.
Has it been Jody?
Jody.
Carrie'd be happy to do it.
Um, so we just have to have one person to help with that. And it should be pretty easy. And then, I'm going, actually, tomorrow morning, I'm gonna go meet her, and just walk around the facility, and kind of take a tour, and see what they need. Their biggest challenge lately has just been staffing, like everybody else. They've been super short-staffed, so their hours are really short right now. Kind of weird, too. They do like 10 to noon, and then they stop and like clean and disinfect, and then they're open again from 2 to 5. So they have like special Corona hours. But, anyway, so, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Council member Malkovich.
All right, for Utah Lake, there's a couple of things that are going on right now. We haven't met since I last reported our meeting, but there is House Bill 232, which is Representative Braber, which is the Utah Lake Authority Act, kind of changing the, the focus of, of how the lake will be managed in the future. That is being heard this week. I've met with him almost daily to give input from, I get calls from the residents, who are concerned about different parts of the bill. And so, he and I have been meeting pretty regularly to give those updates. There are some things that. There are some things that the business community was upset about, so we've been talking with him about that. And so hopefully, and our legislators, our personal legislators know what our concerns are as it goes to the House this week. Then there's also the Lake Restoration Project, which is separate. So if you hear talk about the Lake Restoration Project, that is, I went to a presentation from them yesterday. I had seen it five years ago. And it has totally changed from what they did. One of the things that it seems, you know, it was all the whole fantasy island type thing, right? People like, ah, whatever. What they presented to us last night was really fascinating. They said, how many of you have been to SeaWorld in San Diego? Pretty well, everybody raises their hand, right? Those are these kind of islands. These are man-made artificial islands in Mission Bay. If you've been to Galveston, those islands in Galveston Bay are these kind of man-made islands that protect the shoreline. If you've been to Miami, those islands there are man-made islands. If you've been to New York City, there's parts of New York City around that are man-made islands. And so they showed us different capacities, and they had a panel of experts there to answer a lot of questions with regards to that. There's still, what they have just recently done is put in an application for NEPA, which is the Environmental Protection Agency Federal, just for permitting. So it's not going anywhere for a couple of years because that's a very long, long process. So that has been put into place, and so nothing will really be on the radar till then. But they're trying to get the permitting in place, et cetera. If it doesn't pass, they won't do the project. If it does pass, they're working on some funding options. It's not going to be a taxpayer, taxpayer project. It's six, over six billion dollars. But at this point, they will be bonding themselves as developers. Having a big development for six billion dollars. There's three different types of islands that they're going in. Some that will just be for wildlife mitigation. So some of them will just be for habitat. Some will be kind of similar to what you might think of as Lake Powell, when you go there and you just pull up and camp. There will be some of them that are like that. And then there is a portion that they're deeming to be community developments, that that is where they feel their payoff will be on, on this going forward. It's a very interesting presentation. Of course, as a member of the Lake Commission, we are neutral. We are looking at both sides. So tomorrow, I actually have a presentation with them and the conserve Utah Valley individuals, as well as the sponsor of the bill and some, another legislature who's against it, all coming together at the Capitol. And we're going to have a, about a two-hour meeting to discuss all of this. And so that has been kind of an interesting thing.
So after we voted on that resolution, I, I saw a lot of news about this, this, this island thing you're talking about, and the city of Vineyard is going bonkers.
They put five million into it.
There's some neg, there's a lot of negative against it, even a guy heading it from BYU.
Yeah, Ben Abbott.
You know all that, yeah.
I met, I talk with Ben quite often, and his father actually lives here.
How does our resolution side with which side?
It's not either side. I wrote it to be, I wrote it to be very neutral on purpose, that we are looking at science-based information, that we want to make sure the lake is protected and that any enhancement is, is that way. So they are two extremes right now that will play out.
Okay.
And we don't want to get on one side or the other at this point because it hasn't gone through the NEPA process yet, and you don't want to make policy decisions based on the emotions of one side or the other.
It seems like there is a lot of emotion, yeah.
There's, there's emotion on both sides. There's, there's, there is some potential to really have the lake be an asset. Right now, if they ask people, well, do you boat on Utah Lake or do you drive your boat up to Jordan now? A lot of people will say, well, we go to Jordan now. And so we know that with the population coming south, that the entire lake will have a city around it, right? And so what you were talking about with Vineyard, what they're trying to do, I talked with their mayor, they're trying to kind of jump ahead, and they're spending a lot of their city resources to make their shoreline attractive. So it's not, it's not about the project.
They don't want the traffic. There's all kinds of issues.
They are making, they're, they're making decisions whether that project goes through or not to enhance their shoreline. And so they're building some museums and some restaurants and some trail systems and other things that Vineyard is spending, I think it's five million, on a development project because that's what their citizens have asked for. And so it's separate from that project. But each city that has lakeshore access is putting in their trail systems, and they want it to be an asset to who they are. Now, Provo City, they will need to do some dredging as they expand the airport. So there are some parts there that they will need to be able to dredge out and build out for their new airport expansion. They also have to be concerned about all of the birds because no one wants, you can't have birds that are used to flying there to now be in the airplane. You know, that's not a good sign for either. And so some of this is, right now is DNR is trying to build up other places along the lake to the north so that the birds will start stopping there instead of Provo. So it's starting to work. They've, they've done some projects with the Delta, Provo River Delta, as well as the Wacara Way, and the birds are starting to go there instead. So that's good. I wanted to fill you in just really quick on a couple of bills that affect our city. I talked to the mayor. He's okay with me saying this. So every Monday, I have a two-hour meeting going over the bills of the and then every day, we meet an hour to say what's going on today. And so today, there was a couple of bills, three bills specifically that impact our city. One is House Bill one sixty-nine. And this is with the disaster response. This is the bill that Representative Burton told us about. He is sponsoring it. It is if we have an emergency that any of our paid employees could be then designated as emergency response personnel. They would be paid their normal rate, and we know that they already kick in when there's emergency. We've had that experience. But this just makes it by statute that you can take them from their current duty to, to a new duty. The, the mayor and council can reassign them temporarily to a disaster. The other one is House Bill ninety-six, which I had sent you previously. This is with regards to government act, government records, grandma as we know it. All over the state, there have been individuals who maybe abuse the system because you can get the first fifteen minutes free. So you might come and say, I want this, this, and this, and this, and a separate grandma, so it's always free, but it takes your employees five hours to fill it. And so what they are doing is limiting that you can only request free things every ten days. And that way, they're hoping that it comes down. So either you pay because you want more or you only get the free fifteen minutes every ten days. Now, this does not apply to the media if they're going to be getting a story out or whatever, but it does applies to just regular men because they are realizing that it's become a burden to realize. And then the third one, which I think you will probably talk about, Janet, as you get more involved in the animal shelter. There's been, as some of us who are on the council before, we've got a lot of emails about euthanasia.
We talked about it, actually.
So this went through today. It's House Bill sixty-nine, and it just verifies or confirms that euthanasia will be administered sodium pentobarbital or derivative by intravenous injection by a hypertonic needle.
Was that just submitted or was that voted?
That, that was voted on by the House, by the Senate today and passed the Senate, so now it goes to the House for their consideration. So House, the two House bills went through the House today and both passed, going now forward to the Senate. And then this Senate Bill sixty-nine will go, pass the Senate, will go to the House. So those are three bills that we have talked about in the city.
Just so you know, the animal shelter currently does the carbon monoxide treatment with animals.
And at least when I was there, they said, first off, it's used very seldomly, and it's almost, well, at that time, it was only on feral cats.
Yeah, they, they said they don't do it on dogs that have, that people have brought in.
They euthanize dogs very often at all unless they're just in hideous shape. But it's really the feral cats that are the problem, and it's because administering a shot with a cat
You've got to take gloves.
When I spoke with the director, she said that the, the challenge with the direct doing the injection is that it's a lot more traumatic on the, on the staff because they're having to hold the animal down, they're having to administer that, and they are getting scratched by the cats and, you know, the dogs fighting or fighting them on it. So they said it's, it's a lot more traumatic, and that's why they have done it the way that they have.
And this bill did come out of, because of Utah County, South Utah County, and that's the reason it came. Now it will be statewide, and it is, there were only, I think, two votes against it today, so it's pretty.
Yeah, there's been some big stories.
It's on its way to passing.
And she said they're actually already making moves to make the changes, but, you know, if it goes through, then it'll probably be quicker, right? They'll have to comply.
Now, if they have to do something, an animal control person in, in an emergency situation, then that's different. This is just for the shelters.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for that legislative update. All right, council member Pratt.
So both of these, I have a meeting on Thursday, so don't have any updates. There's the one land sale that they're still working on. And it's actually out in the same area where the garbage dump was going to be done. So they own the land, they're going to sell it, and then reap the rewards. That's, that's about it. That's the only item.
All right, thank you. And as for me, SESD, we had our board meeting today. I don't have anything specific to report there. Just, you know, the, the rising cost of energy is a concern.
Mayor, I've had, I brought this up to Jody. I've had quite a few citizens who have called me with regards to trying to have solar, and SESD has told them that they are not allowed to. And I guess by state statute that that is not true. They should be able to, and I would like you to look into that for our residents. They even said, hey, we'll go off the grid, whatever, and they said, if you, if you go for solar, you're cut off all the way.
That's inconsistent with what I've been hearing, so that's surprising.
That's, that's, there's several residents who have called me about this and.
I have solar.
Right, they gave permits before, but they're not giving permits now.
But it was very, it was very limiting.
One person has been waiting over a year for their.
We were only able to get, I mean, hardly any, you know what I mean? They were very limiting on how much solar we could put on the house.
Right, and so it's very, there's a few citizens who are just really frustrated. One that they just haven't heard back for a year on their permit. Another that was just flat out told, nope, you can't do it. So they, of course, contacted someone who said, that's against the law. They have to allow you to do it. So I would like you to check into that so that we can kind of find out what really is happening with our residents who have the ability to have solar.
Okay, no, I appreciate that.
Could we also get some more detail from the residents, like who? Who's?
One resident said they've been trying to get ahold of you to tell you about it, but I will give you their contact.
Yeah, I, I don't know where they're calling, but I haven't seen anything, but.
Because SESD had, when I got solar, they had a form that you filled out, submitted, and it was approved within a couple of days for me.
Yeah, the one, they said, they told them that they're not doing, they have like a moratorium on the permits.
We did, I've heard that, that there is a moratorium.
They've been waiting for a long time. And they don't know, nobody's giving them answers.
All right, well, I mean, I'm there to represent the city's interests, so I, if there are other concerns that any of you hear about with respect to our electricity, please do let me know because otherwise I'm not fulfilling my purpose. Okay, and then COG and MAG, we also had a committee meeting just this past week and appropriated very large amounts of money. Some of them seem like they will somewhat directly impact us. One of them related to the extension of what is that road coming out of Elk Ridge.
St. Luke Parkway.
Yeah, punching all the way through to I fifteen. So that, my understanding is that's been stalled for almost twenty years. Yeah.
I think they have all the right-of-way spot, but they can't, they haven't been able to get that funding to get it out there. One of the things also that someone else told me about was that, you know how dangerous that intersection is right now? Because this go forward, that they have been asking to put a light there, and SESD won't approve it.
Okay, well, maybe we can talk about that one later because I, I, I think that would be something that I could at least bring up. And then the other one that stood out to me was Provo River. I mean, it's, it's not directly impacting us, but the extension of those trails and, and adding additional structure. It was not cheap, but it sounds like it will be a really cool feature. Okay, and that's it for me. Possible items for upcoming city council agendas. Since I have the floor, I'm going to also discuss one thing that did come up at our SESD meeting, and Jody and I have been talking about it. There are some properties that do wish to annex into Woodland Hills. Elk Ridge has, I don't know, it doesn't appear that they've gone through the formalities of protesting. But anyway, we started the, the wheels turning on the annexation process. And, but the county attorney recommended that we at least reach out in an act of diplomacy to Elk Ridge. And so I talked to Nelson Abbott. He is on their city council, and he's on the SESD board, and we, we talked about that. So one of the things that he proposed is coming to our next meeting, him and the council and the mayor, and just discussing the differing perspectives on that. It didn't sound like it would be a sticking point.
The Lofer Canyon people?
Yeah, yeah, so it's the Hyatt property, Robert Nelson's property. And then there's one other, I don't recall the name of it. Maybe Jody can help me out. But in any event, it's, it's something that we.
Mike Corvus? What she said.
Thank you. So it's, it's something, we, we started the process of noticing it up. I let Nelson know that. Like I said, it didn't seem like it would be adversarial, but they did want to come and at least present their points of view, so I would like to put that on next council agenda. Okay.
The annexation process takes a few months, but as long as both parties agree, both cities, then it usually is a pretty seamless transition, isn't it?
I would assume so. I haven't been through it myself, but it seems like the opposition would be the only thing.
There were some steps.
Yeah, there's some steps.
Wayne looked into it, too, I think.
Yeah, we looked into it. The application or the petition on the annexation accepted by the city council. And there has to be a thirty-day
Notice of a public hearing, then we hold the public hearing, and then we can accept the annexation. So we're looking at the end of.
But Nelson did indicate that it had been something that had been kind of a sticking point under some administrations. I don't know all the history. I guess we'll get that next meeting.
Utilities were an issue.
Yeah, but it, I, right now, I believe the plan is to redirect traffic so that it doesn't feed out onto Lofer Canyon Road. And so that should address that issue. But yeah, I mean, so come prepared with your questions. Any other items that anyone wants to get on the agenda for next meeting?
I always think of it, and then I forget when I'm sitting.
I have a random question probably for the back row, but do we, like, our snow up on our mountain, is it pretty low? Like, do we know kind of where we're at, like on Snowpack? It just seems like we haven't had any moisture in a while. No idea?
I've heard it was low, but.
I just wondered. I'm just thinking of next summer when it's hot and dry again.
Yeah.
Well, and as it's set there, if we do get a big dump, then we have to be worried about avalanche, right? Because it's now icy up there because of the melting and freezing again, and so a new layer of snow could, could be something we need to potentially consider.
Okay.
That's all, I just wondered.
Thank you. So that closes now the work session, and Janet, I know it's your husband's birthday, so.
Sixty.
I am fine proceeding without a break if everyone concurs, or if people feel they need a break, we can take one.
I say go ahead, too.
Okay.
We'll be quick.
Okay, then let's call this city council meeting to order. And we will have a pledge given by council member Kinniston, followed by an invocation given by council member Hilliard.
Thank you.
Oh, they got one.
Yeah. If you'd like to stand and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father and Hether, we are so very grateful to be gathered together this day to be able to.
day to be able to discuss the the business of the city of Woodland Hills. We are so very grateful for thee and thy protection, which thou hast given us. We pray that thou wilt continually watch over and bless the residents of our wonderful city. Bless them with happiness, joy and safety. We also at this time pray that thou wilt pour out thy, thy blessings of moisture on our city, if that be thy will, so that we may be able to not suffer the same drought that we did last year. We pray that thou wilt also guide us as we make decisions that affect the residents of our city, that thou wilt give us guidance and help to know what is best that we should do. We say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, so now we move to the public comment portion. Uh, just as a reminder, public comments are limited to two minutes or less. Um, comments submitted via email need to be received prior to 3:00 PM the day of the meeting to be included. And email comments will not be read aloud during the meeting, but will be distributed to the council and included in the official record. All right, so we have a number of, uh, visitors here. Uh, this gentleman on the front row, did you have something that you'd like to bring before the council?
I'm the most paranoid person.
Well, we could vote on it.
Might be true.
I'm sorry. Yeah, can you, uh, speak into the microphone?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Dick George. I live across just east of the city. Um, what does the city have in the way of backup in terms of, uh, water? Should electricity fail? Is there anything?
Well, uh, so with respect to redundancy on water, that that is part of, uh, the discussions that I, uh, am gonna be having with Corbett. Um, you know, it it's a matter, I mean, if we had unlimited budget, obviously we would have all kinds of redundancy, but you know, it is something that we have to balance. I can't say that we have a specific plan in place, but that is something that I agree with you, that that's something that needs to be addressed. And, uh, so we we, uh, definitely have got that, uh, as part of our discussions moving forward.
Hey, Mayor.
Yeah.
I I think though, to answer your question, if electricity were to fail, we do have a generator up there with, we're getting fuel up there, or do we have fuel up there now, Corbett?
No, the generator's got a hundred gallons tank in it. It's a hundred thousand watt generator.
Okay. So that's what we have today. Yeah, we do have something.
Is there any such thing as gravity feed? So without electricity, but still feed is what you're saying. Okay, that's the important part. Yeah, two grand of water. Good. That's the important part. All right, that's all I had.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming and, uh, expressing your concerns.
Preparedness. I think a lot of people have preparedness on their minds.
Yeah. Well.
Good.
It is.
Right?
Okay, yep, Ernie.
You want the mic, Ernie?
No.
Okay, well, just so people online can hear you.
It's for the people that are online can hear.
Um, can you, uh, yeah.
They want to hear you.
Well, I'm playing the dollar short, cause I came, I guess that guy couldn't sell his, uh, four point six five acres down on Valley View, so he wants to divide it in acres? Is that what?
Just, I'm in my head.
Oh. Yeah, so I guess it doesn't matter to me. I got my, I got my four and a third acres. I got all the trails and stuff I need, so I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you.
So what are they gonna do? Is that what you're gonna do is just?
Just break off one acre.
So you're gonna have four of them or one?
No, just two properties.
He's gonna keep his.
He can keep one that he's building his house on and he's cutting off one acre.
Oh.
And it's kind of like an arm. It's kind of up, so.
So it'll only be two lots.
Okay, I got one more question and since, see, now you're picking my brain. You know, they did a great job on repaving the streets, but why isn't it a a standard to do that tubing under the driveway so that we went, so your water will go under your driveway instead of?
So with respect to the culverts then, that, uh, is that what you're referring to? And Corbett is probably the best qualified and quit to answer this.
When they were doing the, when they were doing the driveway and how it connects, seems like some people have their, their, uh, we'll say gutters all set up and some have the tubing under their, under their driveway. Okay. Well, I'm not smart enough to know these things until we had those good rainstorms in the spring, right after the streets were done. And and the water would come down Valley View and take a scenic tour right into my driveway, cause it's, it's kind of slowed down.
Right.
And so I'm just questioning, why isn't it a standard to have a, a tube under every driveway when you're repaving the road? For a dummy that didn't know better.
Yeah, and I I I can't speak to, I mean, I know that there are covert requirements, size requirements, but, uh, Corbett, take it away.
There is a standard that requires culverts under the driveway, but when we re-hit the roads, the council didn't want to spend money to redo everybody's driveway, if that's a private property issue anyways.
Well, are they redoing it or are they just laying down extra piping? Cause they're, they're coming up to, let's say, let's say we're having cement, they do the hard top of the, you have the cement, why can't they just do a little deeper and go over the tube?
Cost.
Well, what would the cost? Where's our tax office go? Not that. Well, at least, I mean, why don't they say, uh, we could do the, we could do piping under your thing, you'll have to pay for it. I wouldn't like to hear that before. Now, now if I wanna, if I wanted to do anything, I'm gonna have to do it myself anyway, right?
Would have anyways.
I, that's right. But at least they would have had to hold dug at the, at that time, you know? For just a dummy that doesn't do roadwork, they could have told the residents high.
Okay, well, and and we appreciate the comment on that as well. I mean, it's certainly something we're, uh, happy to look at. I mean, you know, there are reasons why we strike the balances we do, and so thanks for bringing it to our attention.
It's just, it's just for dummies that have nothing to do with roadwork, they figure that they know what they're doing. And then it's finished and it looks good and everything, but then we have a couple of good downpours and you got a flood going down your, your driveway.
Fair enough.
Is that something we should consider going forward in our, other two phases?
Well, so just to speak to what you're talking about, you're, you're exactly right. And actually, we've had the Public Works Committee. Well, let me back up. When Woodland Hills was first developed, so the older part of the city, we didn't have very good covert requirements. So some people did, some people didn't. We didn't even have like drainage on the side kind of requirements. You see that in the newer sections of the city because we kind of learned from our mistakes and made new requirements. So in the newer parts of the city, like Summit Creek, they have to have culverts under every single driveway and they even have sizing requirements around how big the culvert has to be based on flow. So we've learned a lesson. Now, in the older parts, um, which I happen to be in one of the older parts, and interestingly enough, when they redid my water on Oak, we found my culvert. It was awesome. I couldn't believe they found it, but it was three feet down. So it was kind of useless. So anyway, it's, it's one of those hit or miss things in the older part of the city. In the newer parts.
All I would recommend is if they're redoing that, if they let the resident know or a dummy that doesn't know even about culverts, for instance, until it happens to you, you know? That, hey, if you want to pay a little extra, we'll put a tube under, under your driveway.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, and there's more than that. I'm sure to do the, you know, how people have rocks to have their, you go down on Woodland Hills Drive and you usually see some nice rocks on the side that make it kind of a reservoir type thing, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was part of that road project, they do those rock line digges, which we do now, require for newer places. But again, to David's point, we didn't do that in the beginning, so.
I'm talking about solar. You say you have a solar panel?
I do.
Do you get two bills from SESD?
I do.
Me too.
Not a fan.
I don't like it either.
I don't like it either.
All right, noted.
After we evacuated, those solar panels used to be on, on, uh, on a program and you'd get, and it's no big deal, cause nobody, nobody's taking charge of it. You would get, uh, an email each month to show how many trees you saved. Okay? Well, after we got evacuated and came back, that program's been down and nobody in Giza Rats Razzoo.
Well, that's because all the trees were burned.
The rats razzoo.
Now, that would be, that would be up to your solar provider. That's not the city and it's not SESD.
Well, most of the solar providers probably had a business by the time they.
Yeah, but that was your provider that gave you that. Cause mine gives me that each month.
Yours gives, is it called Indeed or something like that?
No.
All right, thanks, Ernie. Uh, Jody, do we have, uh, uh, everyone here has already been? Yeah, of course.
Ben from the creek and on the development agreement, just a couple other comments. Um, as it relates to the vacating the property that we've booked, that's the overall development agreement, we're still pushing forward.
All of it, but we felt like that particular portion was important enough for us to Wayne and what Wayne and Dave said, to kind of put, slow down a little bit on that until we can find out whether or not the city will agree to that, right? And so that that process, Wayne sent that to me, I think it was maybe last week. I can't remember when. Um, so we understand what the process is now. There's the 10-day notice, there's the public hearing. The city council needs to review it all and and what approve or, or, you know, for or against. Um, and so we're working to put all that information together to submit to the city as soon as we can, understanding that the next city council meeting is two weeks from now. It needs to be that 10-day. We hope we can get it in time so that 10-day notice can be met for the next city council, unless that's probably pushing it. That's our, that's our.
I'm understanding that the first city council meeting in March, we can cancel because of the caucus, right?
Yes.
Our concern is if we don't make it for this next city council, we're gonna miss the next one, the council. That would be pushed to the end of March, so we would just ask if for some reason it will make this next council meeting, except for some way. I don't know, if we're planning to reschedule that March eighth, if you're not.
That's not feasible.
Okay, I didn't know that. That's, okay.
That'll have to be published in the paper, off to the paper by Thursday with all the ready documents, so.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of learning as we go a little bit on.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, anybody online, Jody? Okay.
Oh, I see a hand.
Hi, Mark. Go ahead. Uh, you're muted, though.
Oh, he was.
You almost had it.
Yep, you're getting close, but nothing yet.
Just move your slider a little more.
I thought it was there earlier. I guess I did something wrong. But yes, I just wanted to talk a little bit, you know, there was some discussion about the the solid waste. Uh, we've also had in the newsletter, the, uh, the benefits of of recycling again, and we referred to, I think the newsletter referred us to Provost's, uh, website on that. And one of the things it talked about was the, uh, use of like junk mail and stuff being, can be recycled. And I think, you know, most of us probably get a good chunk of, a good, you know, good section of junk mail in our mailbox every day. Uh, is there any reason why we couldn't put a recycle can down by the mailbox, maybe put a sled in it and padlock it so that you can't put regular waste in there? I mean, if we're gonna push, push it, I think that's one area we can certainly contribute to, to the cost. That's all I got.
The green, the green one, the green one is full of recycling, yeah.
Can we talk to the, the post office and see if they've put it there for?
Yeah, that's a great point. Um, so we'll take it under advisement, I guess, uh, next step. Thanks. All right, Severin? I'm assuming Sevy Babe is you, Severin?
Such a funny name to put on your calls. Severin?
He raised his hand and walked away, I guess.
Well, zooms.
All right. Okay, sorry. I, my, my box moved around and I was trying to unmute the wrong box. Uh, just, I understood, uh, I think I understood from the discussion earlier about the appeals authority, that the city may be considering, uh, having, um, a lawyer on, attorney on retainer to be the appeals authority. I would just make a suggestion that you might also consider as an alternative, an arbitrator, because they can do essentially the same thing and may not cost the city as much money. That was my comment.
Okay, and and thank you, Severin. And I think that's a great point. Uh, honestly, I, I mean, i- i- in terms of the qualifications, I'm certainly open to a variety of options. I just know that there are a number of attorneys that do this as just part of their legal services. But yeah, certainly if we can find somebody that's qualified and and has a a good solid track record in that regard, that would, uh, be a great option. So, thank you. Okay, anything else? Or anyone else? All right, well, that closes the public comment, uh, portion of the meeting. So now we move on to the consent agenda. Uh, and it would be appreciated if we could, uh, get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Pratt and seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, um, item number 10, ordinance 202204, uh, adopting a change in zoning.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, Councilmember Platt, Pratt makes the motion.
I will second that.
And Councilmember Kinniston seconds that. So this is one that we will take a roll call vote on. Uh, Councilmember Malkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinniston.
Yes.
And Councilmember Lunt.
Yes.
Okay, uh, it's unanimous, motion carried. Uh, item 11, appointment of a member to the Public Works Committee. We discussed.
We discussed it last night.
Last time, yeah.
And then, but we couldn't make the appointment because we needed to have it on the agenda.
Okay, so yeah, Paul McCarthy, or Paul McCarthy, Paul MacArthur. I'm blending, uh, my idols.
You made the motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint him.
Okay, so Councilmember Hilliard, uh, makes a motion to call Paul MacArthur as member of the Public Works Committee.
He's in agreement, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
We didn't know.
And Councilmember Malkovich seconds. Um, so, uh, Councilmember Malkovich, how do you vote?
Oh, this is just, you know, the roll call.
Oh, roll call is not necessary. Okay, excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Uh, and then approval of the ADU application. I think that we would need a motion to table that, uh, until next meeting because we decided.
I think you can just table it.
Yeah, you can just table it. You own the agenda, so you.
Well, I, I, I thought I'd read somewhere that tabling did require, uh, a vote, but if you are saying I'm authorized, I'll table it. Consider it tabled. Okay, um, then, uh.
And, and well, tabling it, I just want to make sure that by next meeting, that we have the list in place so that we can put it on the agenda, talk about it at the work session, look at that whole list and what's going to be required so that we have adequate time.
talk about it at the work session, look at that whole list and what's going to be required so that we have adequate time to-
And, and maybe even if we could get the list a little bit earlier, just because it's caused a little bit of angst.
Just with one.
I know, but then we can all look at it and have time to look it over good.
I'd like to look at it, yeah.
Yeah, and, and look at it this way. It's our way of torturing Doral even more.
I know. I knew I was opening a can of worms when I was like, Doral! I know, but I wanted you to be able to speak your mind, so.
Okay, great point. Thank you. All right.
So who would this fall on? Who's?
Jody.
Is this Jody that has it? So it's Wayne?
It's Wayne, Jody.
It's great.
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay.
Take your time, guys.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to help you with that if you need it at all, Wayne.
Okay, then it's, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll give a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
You guys, I gotta show you.
We are out of here early.
Old man?